Good evening. My name is Shay Atleroo, Chairman of the Downtown Sarasota Alliance, and we're pleased this evening to partner the Downtown Sarasota Condo Association on this forum. Both organizations share a passion for downtown and its many residents and businesses. If you do not already remember, we recommend that there's a link on the following slides to look into joining or supporting the DSCA or the DSA. On behalf of the DSA, I want to thank the many volunteers and staff for hosting this event. We thank all the candidates for addressing the matters of our downtown and our city at large, and thank you for all attending and listening to our future leaders. And of course, I want to thank the Shoemaker Law Firm and its staff for putting together this presentation and the technology involved in hosting this forum. Together, let's all keep Sarasota strong. Eileen?
Thank you, Shay. I'm Eileen Normile, President of the Downtown Sarasota Condominium Association. It's our pleasure to host this candidate debate, the first ever with all six candidates, some of whom barely have the ink dry on their qualifying paperwork. In recent months, the Downtown Sarasota Condo Association has turned its attention to communication, communication with city residents, particularly during this time of COVID-19's changing parameters. We made it a point to reach out, not just to our members downtown, but to the entire city. We are all in this together. One of the most important communications we can offer you is an introduction to the candidates for City Commission in District 2. That's what we're doing tonight. This is an issues-oriented race. It is nonpartisan. The candidates, in fact, are prohibited from campaigning with any reference to their political affiliation. That's the law. It's part of the city's charter. City issues like fixing the roads, zoning, and finance cross party lines, so please listen to the candidates' opinions on city issues and tune out the rest of the noise when voting. We all wish we could be together tonight in a room, but that would be quite a big room because as of 5:30 tonight, we had over 200 people registered to watch this debate, so welcome to all of those. A quick thank you to the law firm Shoemaker, Loop, and Kendrick for offering us the services of their IT department. They have made this debate virtually possible. This debate will be recorded and posted on the website of DSCA for those who could not be with us tonight, or for those who would just love to watch it a second time. It's now time for me to turn the virtual microphone over to our moderators. Let me introduce them. Dr. Peter Fanning has been a resident of Downtown Sarasota for 14 years, and in most of that time, he's remained active advocating for a better Sarasota. He was president of DSCA for five years and now is honored to continue to serve on the board as President Emeritus. Brett Henson is Vice Chairman of the Downtown, and there he is, Sarasota Alliance, which exists to provide a forum and build community among the stakeholders of Sarasota's downtown district. He's also an attorney with the Sarasota Office of Shoemaker, Loop, and Kendrick, where he practices in the areas of construction and commercial litigation. He is also board certified by the Florida Bar in Construction Law. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Ray Allen. Come here.
The floor is yours.
Brett, you're up.
Thank you. Forgot to hit the microphone. Eileen, thank you for the introduction, and Peter, it's good to be here with you tonight. We've been working together to develop a debate under unusual circumstances, and we appreciate everyone for joining us. Before we get started, Peter and I just wanted to give a brief overview as to the rules for the debate. We're going to be opening up with each candidate providing an opening set of remarks, and from there, we'll proceed to a series of questions. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer, and to the extent a question calls for rebuttal or response, we will be giving an opportunity for candidates to provide a one-minute rebuttal or response. At the end of the debate, we will allow for each candidate to provide a two-minute closing statement, and we thank you all for attending. Peter will also be providing some additional information about the debate.
Thank you, Brett. And now we have some rules for the audience. Audience members may send in questions. Brett, can you review that quickly with how they get a question in?
Yes. So for audience members who are looking at your screen, there is a questions option where you can type a question. We have two volunteers, Aaron Silk, who is, who works with the Economic Development Corporation and is a DSA Board Member and Executive Committee Member, along with Bob Perillo, who is a DSCA Board Member. They will be reviewing the audience questions during the debate and picking the top questions for use at the end of the presentation.
Thank you. Just a couple of rules for the questions. The questions must be single-part questions. The moderator, at his discretion, whether it be Brett or I, may follow up for clarification if we feel that the answer needs further clarification than what to the question. Audience questions, so limited in their context that they are specific to a personal situation, will be emailed to the candidates to answer at their discretion after the forum. Brett, would you introduce our candidates?
Yes, and one final point is that during the debate, Peter and I will be off-screen, asking the questions so that we can have all six candidates visible on screen during the debate. So at this stage, I'm going to go ahead and turn off my camera and invite the candidates to turn on their cameras so they can be visible. Good evening, everyone. And again, we'd like to thank all six of our candidates for joining us tonight. And at this time, we are going to go in alphabetical order and allow each candidate to give a brief one-minute opening statement regarding their positions. And we'll start by candidate Liz Alpert. Liz, can you hear us? You'll have to unmute yourself.
There we go. Okay, thank you. Okay. Hello, everyone. I'm Commissioner Liz Alpert, and I'm running for reelection to the Sarasota City Commission. Before I tell you why I'm running, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm the oldest of eight children. My dad was a truck driver, and my mother stayed home to take care of all of us. Due to my family's financial situation, I wasn't able to go to college after high school, so I started working and went to school when I could, taking a class or two at every opportunity. It took me nearly 20 years to get my undergraduate degree and also raise three daughters, but I never stopped pursuing my dream. My ultimate goal was to become an attorney. I finally got the opportunity at age 54, and I took it. While in law school, I served on the city's Human Relations Board, then served on the Civil Service Personnel Board until my election in 2015. I'm now a practicing family law and estate planning attorney in addition to my duties as a city commissioner. The reason I'm running again is because I want to continue the progress we've made in the past five years for a smarter, better Sarasota. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Alpert. We're now going to turn it over to Mr. Barbetta. If you could, please give us your remarks.
Sure. Thank you, Brett. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, many thanks to the Downtown Sarasota Alliance and the Downtown Condominium Association, along with the Shoemaker Law Firm. I sincerely appreciate this opportunity to be here tonight, and also thanks to the many folks who are out there in the listening and viewing audience. And kudos to my fellow candidates. It's not an easy task to run for office, so I commend them for entering the fray. My name is Joe Barbetta, and I'm a retired attorney and consultant, and my wife and I live in the city of Sarasota. We've been here for 20 years. We've lived in the county for 37 years. I chose to run for office because I think it's time for new leadership. I think there's been some serious dysfunction. I think there are some continuing problems. I think we'll get into most of that during the discussion, hopefully, and I look forward to serving on the city commission. I believe in serving and I think that those two qualities are extremely important, and if you're not serving, you're not leading. So I look forward to a healthy debate and a civil debate, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hyde?
Well, my name is Martin Hyde. Welcome to everybody to Democracy in Action. I don't have to read what I'm going to say. We have two Democrats, we have three Republicans, and we have one very obvious developer's candidate. You know, the county has had urban sprawl. It's been concreted over. Benderson and Neal and Beiruf and Etial have taken over, and now their eyes are cast on the city. It doesn't really matter which of the other five of us get elected, but I'm here tonight to stop and absolutely tell people that the developer's candidate, the Benderson candidate, Joe Benderson, is not the guy to run the city of Sarasota. There's only one reason they want him. He's being bankrolled by them. The first place he went to work from when he left the county was out of Benderson's offices. So my name's Martin Hyde. You like me, you don't like me. Vote for me. Vote for one of the others, but do not vote for Joe Benderson.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Mr. Patterson? Let me stop you, Joe. Don, you're muted.
Thank you. Hello, my name's Don Patterson. My grandfather moved to Florida around 1925. My mom was born in the Tampa Bay area, Tampa, in 1934, and I was born in Tampa in about 1962. That's back when Florida was 5 million people, so I understand growth. I've seen the changes. There was no Highway 75. I'd come to Lido Beach and Coquina Beach by 301, and recently relocated back to Florida after some business experience elsewhere in the country, and moved to Sarasota in 2016. I was looking for a home in Florida after founding a company. I founded a company here in Florida in 2013 called Ascend Wireless Networks. I build the wireless infrastructure for the large carriers like Verizon, Sprint, AT&amp;T. Those are my clients. I hold a general contractor's license, electrical contractor license here, and I have offices in other parts of the country. But I love Sarasota out of all the states, out of all the places in the state. This is the best city to live in the state of Florida, and I believe that, and I'm here to stay. And as a new resident, I got involved immediately with homelessness, so I'm a homelessness advocate here. I founded Safe Stay here in Sarasota with my own money. No city approval, no city action. It was something that I created and funded. Immediately, I joined Big Brothers and Big Sisters here. I've been on the board since I've been here.
I don't mean to cut you off, but I just want to make sure all the candidates have...
Okay. So basically, I've been serving this community since I got here, and this is just an expansion of my opportunity to serve. I'm an experienced CEO, and I'm interested in participating in the city. There's a lot of challenges that I've seen, and I want to work to solve them.
Thank you. I'm not sure what's causing that noise, but we will try to get it resolved before we move on. Bear with us one second. We are trying to resolve this technical difficulty, so please bear with us. Okay, I think that solved the problem, and I apologize for the technical difficulty. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We will go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Turner for his opening remarks. Mr. Turner? You'll have to unmute your line, sir.
How's that?
Excellent.
Great. I'm Jerry Turner, candidate for Sarasota City Commission, District 2. I want to thank the organizers, and I want to thank the audience for coming this evening and listening to the discussion between me and my fellow candidates. For nearly 30 years, I worked in financial management and general management, mostly at large international banks. I was the corporate treasurer for Bank of America in San Francisco. I was a managing director for Bankers Trust in New York City, and I was a financial controller at Eastman Kodak in Rochester, New York. I also taught finance and economics at the University of California, Berkeley. I moved to Sarasota upon retirement, and since I've been in Sarasota, I have focused on environmental preservation, sensible land use regulation, and local politics at both the county and the city level. Joe and I go back a long way. So I was also proud to be a city commissioner during the Great Recession and played a critical role in leading the city during that financial crisis. I believe that my combination of for-profit experience, nonprofit experience, and government experience uniquely qualifies me to serve as your city commissioner, and I look forward to campaigning and meeting you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Wells? Mr. Wells, the floor is yours to give.
There we go. Am I live now?
Yes.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Jerry Wells. I'm a father of four amazing children. My father was a police officer. My mother was a school teacher. I'm a fiscal hawk, and I am your law and order candidate. I'm the candidate that understands the renewable energy market. I sit on two advisory boards here in the city. I'm in this race because I'm tired of the same recycled career politicians holding our city hogtied to special interests. We need change, and I will bring that change. I'll bring accountability and transparency to the commission. I'll cut the wasteful spending and I'll run our city like a business. I'm a quick student and a good listener. Before I start to roll tonight, I hope everyone appreciates how difficult this election cycle has been on the candidates. No one has ever experienced anything like this before. In fact, it's so out of whack that Benderson needs Caddy Joe Gowning to run for office.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. At this time, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dr. Fanning to ask the candidates our first question for the evening.
Good evening, candidates, and thank you very much for being here. The order of answer, you'll all answer the same question. You have 90 seconds to do so. And Ms. Alpert, you would be the first one up. And here's the question. It involves some issues around zoning. In the downtown, city staff has the power to approve major development projects without public input, referred to as the administrative review process. That procedure is different than in the rest of the city. Do you believe that that procedure has served the city well? If not, how would you change it?
Well, I think there's a couple of issues with the administrative review. As you know, that was put into place when the downtown master plan was designed back in the early 2000s, and that was part of the agreement that there would be a master plan for how the downtown would be developed, and that if the developer followed all of the zoning and all of the rules that were put into place, that then they could get administrative approval. I think overall, I think it's served the downtown very well. We've got a really dynamic downtown, at least we did before the pandemic, but that doesn't mean it doesn't need to be tweaked. I think there could be certain situations where perhaps we do need to look at the administrative review and also look at the zoning and look at our setbacks and see what we need to change in terms of that.
Thank you, Ms. Alpert. Mr. Barbetta?
Thank you, Peter. It's a good question. I don't know how many people were here prior to 2000, but downtown was dead. It was pretty bad shape, and Dewanee was brought in, a premier urban planner from the East Coast. He spent considerable time here in February of 2000 right through to, I believe, July, having about 15 charrettes attended by close to 1,450 to 1,500 people. I think they averaged 80 to 100 people per charrette. They came up with a great plan. Dewanee also did the smart code. This plan was also brought before the CRA and the Planning Board. It was reviewed by the city commission. It was sent up to the DCA, Department of Community Affairs. They were prepared to find it in compliance, and a group of, a small group of people, I think it was six citizens, brought a challenge, and that challenge resulted in some compromise, and we ended up with the plan we have now, which I think has worked well. I mean, we wouldn't have gotten the Whole Foods. We wouldn't have gotten the downtown development that we have right now. Developers aren't going to invest money in a downtown area, considerable amount of time and money to go ahead and build buildings if they're going to take years to get approvals. So the staff was given the ability to get the administrative review process. So I think it's worked well. I know that outside of the city, there are some other situations that don't allow administrative review, but I think in the city, it's worked well and...
Thank you, Mr. Barbetta. You're running out of time.
Okay, the same people who oppose the administrative review oppose the Ringling Bridge, and we all know what happened there.
Thank you. Mr. Hyde?
Well, I didn't disapprove of the Ringling Bridge, and you know, the thing is, things evolve. They don't necessarily follow the dollar bills. You know, Joe would know what his bosses would want, but you know, my thoughts on this have evolved. The reality is very simple. The reason they don't want administrative review is because they don't want any kind of peer review between them and the staff getting in the way of concreting over the rest of Sarasota. I'm strongly in favor of transparency. Anybody that isn't, you'd have to ask why not? Why don't they want to do the things the right way? What is, you know, haste makes waste. I understand it makes profit, but that's not why people should be being elected here in the city of Sarasota. I think we just heard exactly what we're up against here. They don't want administrative approval. They just want an approval. Or rather, they want administrative approval. They just want their approval. They don't want anybody else getting involved, particularly citizens. As far as I'm concerned, I don't want special interests and developers telling me what kind of city I live in. So absolutely, I've evolved. I've changed. I'm drinking the Kool-Aid here. As far as I'm concerned, we need to turn away from administrative approval and let the citizens have some input on larger-scale development.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Mr. Patterson? Got to turn on your microphone, Don.
Thank you. Okay. So yeah, there's a lot of questions around how do some of these developments happen, and how do they get approved? And so a lot of things that have been built recently are a big surprise of how they, the size and scope, given the things that are around them. So I believe that all projects should have an opportunity for public input, but there should be notices. The city doesn't have a reputation of moving with velocity, but it's not because there's not public input. So I feel like the public input's necessary, but I also recognize the cost of doing business and the red tape. So I think the whole process could be reviewed and make sure that the developers, the business owners, aren't spending a lot of money on the front end getting the permits. So move with velocity, but have public opinion and make sure that it makes sense for that location.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Yes, I'm very much opposed to the continuation of administrative site plan approval. When I was previously on the commission, I sponsored an ordinance that would have abolished administrative site plan approval on South Palm Avenue. It would have also imposed reasonable setbacks side and front and rear. Unfortunately, that motion failed, and we have now two very, very large, out-of-scale buildings right on the sidewalk, and they're seriously impacting the quality of that neighborhood. I think that iconic buildings, like the Transamerica Building in San Francisco or the World Trade Center, or the Opera House in Sydney, define a city in many ways and define the quality and character of the city. The city has a right, and the citizens have a right to weigh in on those iconic and large buildings. Large, massive, out-of-scale buildings, oppressive buildings that crowd the sidewalk do not increase the character of Sarasota or the quality of living there. So I think that except for smaller buildings, administrative site plan approval should be abolished throughout the city.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Wells?
Yes, good evening. I don't want to beat the dead horse here, but the code is the code, and I'm for property ownership rights. But we have to think about the citizen's input. It is so important. We just can't ignore that.
Okay, thank you. Brett, I'm turning it back over to you for the second question.
Thank you, Peter. Tell the candidates, this next question will deal with the topic of COVID-19 and the city of Sarasota's response. The city of Sarasota has engaged in a number of efforts to mitigate the economic impacts associated with COVID-19 on downtown businesses and restaurants. Some of these include expanded outdoor dining, partial street closures, temporary outdoor café permits, the Small Business and Safety Assistance Grant Program, and a waiver of construction permit fees associated with certain OSHA requirements. It's also been reported that the city is considering a shop local campaign. Do you believe the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic has been effective? What role do you believe the city should play assisting local businesses in recovering from the effects of COVID-19? And the question will first go to Commissioner Alpert.
Okay. Are we going to switch up who goes first each time? But I'm happy to answer the question because I think the city really stepped up to try to help the businesses.
Excuse me. Brett, I think I'd just like to interrupt. This question really should start with Mr. Hyde. I mean, Mr. Barbetta.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. Thanks, Brett, for the question. I think the city, what they've done, it might have been a little late to the party, but I think it certainly helps, no question about it. I do think a lot of it was suggested by the business associations that helped push the city towards doing that, but I do think where they dropped the ball is the St. Armand's area with the Lido Beach situation. I think that was an unfortunate thing, delaying when they saw the county open the beaches, yes, the key, and the other beaches in the county, but they delayed on the Lido opening. That really hurt St. Armand's, and it was most unfortunate. I think the other thing with the COVID situation is the city needs to be cognizant of the huge loss of revenue that's forthcoming with the gas tax, tourist tax, sales tax. That's going to hurt, that's going to hurt the city budget tremendously, and it's going to hurt the citizenry. And I certainly don't hope there's a, I don't hope that a property tax is forthcoming to make up the deficit. I think the city needed to address that huge deficit that's going to come pretty soon because the next three to six months plus next year's budget are going to be seriously affected by this loss of revenue.
Brett, are you on?
Mr. Hyde, would you get a response?
Sure, respond. You know, it was a unique set of circumstances. I don't terribly blame people. I think fear played a huge part in this. people. I think fear played a huge part in this. You know, I think unprecedented, uncharted waters. I've never seen such a, you know, if we talk about infection, the fear was the biggest and greatest infection that we suffered. The government pitched in and increased the national debt by 15%. You know, Joe's right. On one level, this isn't going to go away. There's a second shoe to drop economically. It's going to be around about $5 or $6 million to buy, in my estimation, during the next year and probably the year after that. I've been talking for the last four years. I've been to every city commission meeting. None of the others have, other than Liz, of course. And, you know, I've talked about this. I've talked about the fact that you need to save for a rainy day, and they haven't. They've increased their budget. They've increased the number of staff that they've got. And something's going to have to give. We've 25% more staff. We've got a city manager making a quarter of a million a year. He's got two assistants. We've got a gold-plated healthcare plan. There's an awful lot of stuff that's going to need to be looked at. It's very unfortunate because it's not anybody's fault, but frankly, it's the fault of the current city commission. They've been asleep at the wheel for the last three years when I've been telling them you can't spend every nickel you've got. And now we're in a situation where we're going to have to make some very painful cuts.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Mr. Patterson? Yes, the city's response to supporting the businesses during the COVID-19 crisis was the reason I joined the race. I don't necessarily watch a lot of news, but every time I did, the city was working against the businesses in this area. St. Armand's Circle is a perfect example. They just don't have the instincts to support businesses. Like, figure out three weeks later that, oh, you may have made a mistake. It's a little bit too late for those businesses. They needed that cash. So I think the city needs to really step back and look at how they support the businesses and across the board, the whole operational efficiency of the city. And that goes into the idea of cutting costs. So when you look at, how does an organization function? Are they set up to be responsive? And are they functioning? So, and across the board, the city's not known for moving with velocity, for being, this has been no city. And so I had a meeting today with a business that didn't locate here. They volunteered to say, I didn't locate to Sarasota. I located to Bradenton because Sarasota has a terrible reputation of supporting businesses. So that's the reason I got in the race. As a business owner, as a CEO, I understand these issues. Cash flow, you know, taxes, workers' comp, all the other things that go on P and L. So I understand it, and I'm happy to listen to those guys, and I understand their language.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Turner?
Yes, your COVID question is primarily limited to the impact on business and the city's response. The non-budget responses, I think, are good and fine. I think the city did a good job with that, and it seemed to me that they were pretty prompt and pretty punctual. The decision to provide a $2.2 million subsidy was judged in isolation, in a vacuum. It wasn't judged in the context of a whole budget or the budget that we're going to have over the next two, three, and four years. Two years, two months ago, I published an editorial in the Sarasota Herald Tribune imploring the city commission to develop an intermediate financial plan to deal with the financial crisis that is surely coming. And they chose not to do that. Instead, Ambarwin, the city manager, prepared an interim budget that got us through September. He balanced the budget through September with eliminating some really easy cuts, things that they shouldn't have been spending money on the first, in the first place, and relying on fund balances and reserves. I think Martin's estimate of $6 million next year and $6 million the year after, I think those are good estimates based on our experience in 2009 through 2013. Those revenue declines are going to have a serious impact on businesses and on citizens, and the city commission needs to be planning for those now, not planning for September of 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Wells?
Yes. The extended closure of Lido Beach was a huge mistake. The impact was devastating on St. Armand's Circle. This is not a magic trick. The revenue is going to be down. It's going to be down for a longer period of time. Hotels are not going to bounce back after they leave all the restaurants. We're a tourism economy. We have to cut the expenses and move methodically, just like you would in your own business. You wouldn't run your own business into the bomb, but that's what they seem to do with the city because no one up there has any experience with running a business. This is no different.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. And at this time, I'll pass it back to Peter for the next question.
I didn't get a chance to answer the question. I was going to say, I didn't, yeah, I didn't get it. Because I find it interesting that I think three or four of the people said that the reason they got in this race is because the city wouldn't open Lido Beach. I want to remind everyone, I voted to open Lido Beach. So if you had been on the commission and voted to open Lido Beach, it still would have lost. So, you know, that's, that's kind of a non-argument. And in terms of planning for this pandemic and the effect on the businesses and the budget, immediately, our staff and city manager went to work and estimated a $1 million loss in the city, and so looked for $2.8 million in cuts. They're working on a plan for the budget for next year. And I don't think this is going to be as devastating as the 2008 recession. And here's why. This time, all the property value did not drop. We're going to have million dollars, you know, millions of dollars in losses, but I think we're going to have a quicker recovery than we did. And I think the staff is doing a great job in planning for that. We had reserves of four to five months. He recommended it's two to three months. We've had outside auditors look at our budget and say, you know, and over the past few years, we've been raised to a, the second highest bond rating, a double A+. So we must be doing something right in terms of our finances. Thank you.
Rebuttal? May I have a rebuttal?
Yes, we can have a brief rebuttal, Mr. Turner.
Yeah, I would make two comments in response to Commissioner Alpert. Day before yesterday, the chairman of the Fed, Jerome Powell, provided a guidance for the next two years. His guidance was that the economy is not going to recover before 2022. That's significantly worse than the guidance that the Fed was giving in 2008 and 2009. The Fed is very concerned about this economy, and most of Washington thinks this recovery is going to be much worse than 2009 through 2013. On the question of ratings, the rating agencies don't rate organizations. They rate bonds. And they're a fee-for-service. They charge about $5,000 to rate a bond. And their business model is get as many bonds rated as possible and keep the cost down. In 2008 and 2019, they were rating mortgage securities and collateralized debt obligations triple A. And that's one of the principal sources for the collapse in 2000, 2009.
Mr. Turner?
And when S and P was sued, let me finish this one thing. When S and P was sued, the president of S and P said, we rated those securities, but we didn't understand them.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Wells, you wanted to provide rebuttal comment as well.
I do, and I'll make mine short. I don't think you understand the economic ramifications of what just happened. And Mr. Turner is doing an eloquent job of explaining it. This is not going to bounce back. If markets have deepened, rather than a bellshaker, for a long extended plateau or decline, the underlying issues are the underlying issues. The businesses have been shut down, and once you have lost that revenue, you can't make it up. When a hotel loses a night, they've lost the night forever. That's how that works.
And may I just quickly, just one thing? You know, what I heard from Liz, and bless her heart, she doesn't know what she doesn't know, you can't spend your savings account when your problems are long-term and systemic because it come back eventually. You have to start making cuts. The only two ways to balance a budget, get more in, which, you know, you could increase the taxes, and that wouldn't be a very happy thing, or you can spend less out. What you can't do is raise your savings account. It isn't there for that, and it won't last very long. You said you got a few months worth. What's the point of that? We're looking long-term here, and that's just not a long-term answer.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde.
Can I rebut? Yes. A brief rebuttal to those of you who think, I don't know what I'm talking about, or I don't know business, or I don't understand finance. I did full charge bookkeeping years ago. I understand finance. I don't think we need to bend our savings. What I'm saying is that we have it under control, and we're looking at how we handle it. We're not pretending that we don't have to make cuts. Thank you.
Hey, Brett. Brett, one quick point, please.
Sure, Joe. Go ahead.
Yeah, let's not forget that I think seven or eight, maybe even 10 businesses closed permanently on Lido Key. Several businesses have closed downtown. The city was late to the party, very late to the party on Lido. So St. Armand's suffered. We all suffered because businesses are our lifeblood. They're our economic engine, and they're hurt right now.
Thank you, Joe.
And I voted to open that, Joe.
And at this point, I'm going to go to Peter for our next question.
Okay, thank you very much. You were doing pretty well until we got the six, five rebuttals. Okay, so here we go. I'm going to give you an easy question. It was February 2015 when it was announced body cameras will soon be worn by Sarasota police officers, with Chief DePino stating, quote, "Cameras will help improve the relationship between police and the community." In the intervening five years, the cameras have become obsolete, prior training programs are outdated, privacy issues remain, police association wariness continues, and there are possible unintended legal liabilities and budget considerations. If you are elected to the city commission, would you support requiring SPD personnel to wear body cameras? If no, why? And if yes, how would you address the impediments that have delayed the implementation of the body camera program to date? And we'll start with Mr. Hyde.
Well, you know, my son is a deputy sheriff in the county. The toilet's one, six foot seven. And I believe that body cameras, you know, that people think that's going to be a catch-all. The thing about being on camera the whole time is eventually you forget that you are. It won't necessarily condition behavior. What it will certainly do is increase lawsuits. And of course, all things are about perspective, about camera angle. And it presupposes that people won't switch off their cameras. For the most part, overwhelmingly, the police, not just in Sarasota, but everywhere, do a good job. And the idea that you're going to put people under a microscope 24/7, and the smallest slip of a tongue is going to cost them their career. What that will mean is a lot of people simply won't join a police department. I believe in law and order. I believe in transparency, but I don't believe in micromanaging people about their daily business in what's already a very tough job. So no, the answer is I changed my tune as far as body cameras concerned. At this particular moment in time, I'm not in favor of all of those reasons.
Who's next?
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Mr. Patterson?
I, so it doesn't seem like there's just one tool that's necessary for the police department. I'm an honorary sheriff's deputy in Hillsborough County. I've been through training with the sheriff's department in a number of areas. And I think the biggest thing is, we're not, we're not one city that has an issue. I think there's some great models out there. So I don't think that the body cameras are necessary. I think that they were there for the protection of the officer himself so he could justify these incidents. So from my standpoint, it's great training. It's a culture. It's a culture of, you know, we're here to serve and protect, and that, you know, the citizens need to be, to feel protected. They need to feel engaged. So I think that there's a lot of great models out there, but it really comes down to the culture of the police department. Body camera is not one single thing. The training that takes place is important. And then there's a lot of things that can happen. But it's really down to the training and culture, I think, not just one single technology.
Thank you very much. Mr. Turner?
Yes, I believe that we're learning about this technology. It's ambiguous whether it's a positive or a negative. The research so far doesn't clearly state that they improve law enforcement or protect the public uniformly. And I think the technology is constantly improving. We have, in my opinion, an excellent police department that does a very good job of outreach, and we have the budget problem that we've just talked about. My vote would be to watch the market, watch the trends. Perhaps in two or three years, it may be that it's proven that it's a really good approach, a good addition to policing. For now, I don't believe it is, and I would not vote to support it at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Wells?
Yes. On the surface, it sounds like a wonderful idea, having a camera. But personally, I don't think we should be required to wear that. If technology moves along and the costs come way down, then that's another decision to make. At this moment in time, I'm not a supporter of body cameras.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Ms. Alpert?
Well, actually, we're going to be discussing this very issue on Monday at the regular city commission meeting. And part of the reason why that we haven't moved forward with the body cameras before is there are issues with privacy issues and storage of the data that's taken with the body cameras and the expense of that and the time involved for every one minute, from what I'm told, every one minute of video, there's going to be, have to be somebody taking five minutes to redact things that aren't supposed to be there, not to mention the cost. The last estimate we had was $2.5 million for the body cameras. So I don't know that I'm going to be in support of it. Our police department overall has excellent training, has followed the eight can't wait policies that were espoused by the Obama Foundation. And I think we've got a really good police culture and overall a really good police force. So I'm going to have to hear a lot more to make sure that these issues really aren't going to be a problem.
Thank you, Ms. Alpert. Mr. Barbetta?
Thank you, Peter. I support law enforcement, and I don't support the body cameras. I'm the only candidate endorsed by Sheriff Tom Knight, also the incoming sheriff, Kurt Hoffman, also the former city police chief, Peter Abbott, and also the former chief, Terry Lewis. The problem with body cameras is the unintended consequences, Liz just mentioned it, of the people in the area being caught on camera. That's an invasion of their privacy. It ends up in lawsuits. So I think we have a good police department. We have a good sheriff's department. It's all about training. It's all about the culture. It's all about quality people out in the street, community policing. And I really feel that we're in pretty good shape here without the body cams.
Thank you, Mr. Barbetta. Brett, I'm turning it back over to you.
Thank you, Peter. This next question is going to deal with the topic of homelessness in downtown Sarasota. The residents of the city of Sarasota are also contributors to the tax base of the county, and yet the county elected officials and the elected officials of the city are seemingly uncooperative when it comes to many aspects of providing homeless outreach services. You were elected to the city commission. How will you address the situation to improve a coordinated and cooperative sharing of responsibility for the city and county's homeless population? And we'll start with Mr. Patterson.
Thank you. As I shared in my introduction, you only have to live here one day to realize that there's a serious homeless. I was engaged with some of these homeless folks, and I realized that the women had gashes on their head and busted lips, and my heart went out to them. I kind of made up in my mind that they were being abused as a result of being homeless. So I started enrolling people in the community, partnered with More Delight that provides social services to traffic girls, and the Salvation Army. So I provided the So I provided the grant to target women that were being assaulted as a result of being homeless. So that was a super successful program. Salvation Army provided an isolated area for us to have an opportunity to take these women off the street and counsel them for up to 10 days. And then we could find out what was their challenge. Was it a drug challenge? Or what was the challenge that we could divert them into some other programs? So as I looked at that and other experiences I have with homelessness, and I provided the grant, so there was no cooperation with the city. It was really a private partnership. I provided the funding. Mortalite provided the social service, and the Salvation Army provided some isolated housing and rooms to do, to do the counseling. So, and in 27, 2018, I was invited with Brooke Bello to the first human trafficking summit in Washington DC because our program was, was very successful. We caught the attention of the government, and we were, had an opportunity to go up there and spend some time. So that was a great success for Sarasota. When I look at homelessness, and what I understand is that there's just not one solution. It's, these people are homeless not because they don't have a place to live. They have some serious issues, and there are all kinds of issues. There might be five or six or eight, 10 different solutions that are required. So it's really a private, public partnership where you get these folks that have the skills and the talent to work with these homeless folks. You give them the resources, you give them the permitting to put things together that really tackle the problem. If it was as simple as providing somebody home, it wouldn't do a homeless problem.
I'm going to have to interrupt you and stop you there. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Turner?
Yes. I'm an advocate of the Housing First Initiative that, that the city has been pursuing for some time and with favorable results. And I believe the county has also been constructive in that effort. Unfortunately, I believe the favorable trend in homelessness is going to reverse very shortly. Serious recession that we discussed earlier in this meeting is going to cause a lot of people to lose their jobs, and a lot of people who lose their jobs are going to lose their homes. So we're going to see a significant migration over the next two years of people who were previously sheltered and are now unsheltered. We're going to have to find a way to ramp up our efforts there, and it's going to require resources from both the county and the city, and as the federal government as much as we can get, to provide homes and shelter for these people and to mitigate the problems that they have downtown. As to the question of how does one work with the county commission, I think that they, the commissioners that I see are reasonable men and women. I think if we present a reasonable case for the need to shelter these people that are disadvantaged, and I don't mean not only the ones that Don talked about that had serious problems of chemical dependence and mental problems, we're going to have families on the street, people that six months ago had a job and now do not. So I think that constructive approach to the county commission, we can work together and make a big difference.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Wells?
Yeah. This is the trillion dollar question, homeless situation. Let's not forget that these are human beings. These are your neighbors. Something has gone wrong. With that being said, I'm not going to let Main Street become a dormitory. There are a lot of reasons people are homeless. It could have post-traumatic stress disorder coming home from the military. Sometimes it's drugs. Sometimes it's just bad circumstances. Other times, it could be a mental handicap. First, you have to find out what is the actual problem, and then we can address it. Every situation is different. You can't just overlook them and push them aside. Safe time, they cannot just park themselves on the main street. It's not safe, and it's definitely not sanitary.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Commissioner Albert?
Yeah, the homeless issue was one of the biggest issues in 2015 when I ran for the city commission the first time. And at that time, there were about, in what's called a point in time survey, 1,106 homeless on the street. It was, it was really, really bad. So we brought in somebody from, we already created before I got on the commission, a homeless outreach team, which consists of a police officer and a social worker who, who go out every day, and they're in constant contact with these people on the street to educate them about the services that we have to offer and how we can help. And so we started a Housing First program where we started looking for housing one person at a time. In the meantime, we pay for 25 beds at the Salvation Army if there's a need for them to go, to go somewhere. In the interim time, the point in time survey this year was 335. So we went from 1,106 to 335, doing the Housing First, doing, there's a homeless court, there's a community care court. Many partners, along with the city and now the county, is also doing the Housing First and has its own homeless outreach team. So I think we've made tremendous strides. Do we need to keep working on it and keep looking for better ways? Yes, we do, but I, I think that the city is doing a tremendous job with dealing with the homeless issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Albert. Mr. Barbetta?
Thank you, Brett. I don't know if there's a tremendous job being done because I'm downtown all the time, and there's plenty of homeless around. I can assure you, Brett, that the county has been cooperative for years. Back when I was on the commission, I think it was in 2012 or 13, the city brought in Dr. Robert Marvett, one of the premier homeless people in the country, experts. He now works for the federal government for Ben Carson. But Dr. Marvett produced a great report. The city paid for the report. They asked us to help. I made a motion for $500,000 to be put into the pot to get things started. My commission agreed. It was a five zero vote. We found a location for a homeless shelter right on 12th Street, city-owned property that was sitting vacant. All of a sudden, we got pushed back. The city commissioners didn't like Dr. Marvett anymore. They didn't like his recommendations, and that's why we have the problem today. It was never addressed properly when it should have been, and the city has been stubborn about it since, dealing with the county. The county's going forward. Tom Knight, the sheriff's doing a great job. This is about collaboration. The commission should be working together. The county has always been ready, willing, and able to work on this situation. But it's going to take a form of homeless shelter, bring people in the front door that need help, need mental services, need whatever, whatever they need, then they're training, and you get them out the back door with a job. That's how it's done. The property is still sitting there. Mr. Barwin moved trucks over there to make it look like it's being used by the city, but it's a great piece of property on 12th Street. No residences around whatsoever, and we were called racist for proposing it at that location. That's wrong. It should have been addressed. This problem is ongoing, and it won't be resolved, just like Don said, unless something, somebody steps forward. Look at my website and look at the public officials that have endorsed me. It's about collaboration.
Thank you, Mr. Barbetta. Mr. Hyde?
Well, it's good job Joe's not running at large because 12th Street, you know, saying it's not close to anybody else. The whole reason it got blown off is very simple. Nobody wants it in their backyard, and, and it's very easy to be sanguine when you live in a downtown condo with security. The fact is that we have two problems, intractable problems. One is a national, global issue as it relates to poverty and homelessness. And then we have a local issue, in small part, of vagrancy. Vagrancy is a criminal conduct. Vagrancy needs to be established and worked on and pushed back again. The reality is that if we are with a city of 58,000 people to take on the problems of a 420,000 person county and another 420,000 adjacent in Manatee County, who's going to pay for that? The bottom line is very simple. We do not have the resource to take on the homeless problem of the west coast of Florida. As far as I'm concerned, we have a homeless outreach team. We can provide services to people that need them. I, last time around, and this time, said, you know, I will donate my whole salary for the whole four years, I'd like to see any of you do it, to homeless and mental health charities. So I'm prepared to put my money where my mouth is, but I'm not prepared to dump it in somebody else's backyard just because it's not in my district.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde.
Brett? Brett, may I have a rebuttal, please?
Yes.
The property I'm talking about is adjacent to all the city services. The sewage treatment plant, the water treatment plant, all those services are there. There are no residences probably within three quarters of a mile at least. It backs up to the 17th Street Social Services Center, perfectly located. Dr. Marvett thought it was fantastic. One of the city commissioners at the time, when we were collaborating on it, thought it was fantastic. But unfortunately, three city commissioners and the city manager did not want it to happen. And we still have the problem, and it's not going away.
But was that the same city commissioner that you put on to run after you for the county?
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. At this stage, I'm going to give Peter the floor again to ask her next question.
Okay, thank you very much. This one is a little bit more technical and comes out of the comprehensive plan. The environmental protection and coastal islands chapter of the city's comprehensive plan contains this statement at objective six. The city shall implement policies and programs that, that further sustainable development practices. And again, it's section 610, improving air quality with urban forest. The city will actively support programs and regulations that promote the benefits of canopy trees to improve air quality among other benefits. What specific programs have you or will you promote to increase, not decrease, canopy trees in our public right of way? We'll start with Mr. Turner.
First of all, canopy trees and green space are a vital part of a walkable, livable downtown Sarasota. Canopy trees capture and absorb carbon. They capture and absorb rainwater. They clear our air, they clean our water, as do green space on the ground, bushes and plants, et cetera. I'm a very strong advocate of increasing green space downtown wherever we can. The opportunities to increase green space downtown are not large, but the opportunities for canopy trees can be large, and we should seek them out very actively. We've lost with this current commission a number of opportunities to expand green space. The Pineapple Square redo, the little lot next to the garage that used to be a green space that could have been part of a park, the Pineapple Square part of the Pineapple Park, and the roundabouts are all being paved over and installing. We're putting metal statues in the roundabouts instead of trees and green space. We need to be, for every opportunity, to find a green patch downtown. If we're not actively trying to do that, we're going to end up with a lot of hardscape and a lot of palm trees, and downtown is going to be much less hospitable in the summer months.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I will hear from Mr. Wells.
Yes. Well, the idea of the trees is great, but there are a few problems with the trees, and one is the root system. But that being set aside, it's a very simple equation. If you put shade over your head in Florida, it's much more pleasant to walk down the street and to be in the bright sun. It comes down to that. It's very, very simple. The amount of sunlight hitting the sidewalk, people have a tendency to walk more.
Thank you very much. Ms. Albert?
I certainly am a proponent of green space and trees and canopy trees, and not only would like to see them downtown in the parks, but also make spaces for them along sidewalks, along complete streets, so that we can make all of these areas a lot more walkable. But we do have a lot of green space, you know, despite what some people want to say. We've got Five Points Park, we've got J.D. Hamel Park, we've got the, the Island Park. We're creating a brand new park on the bayfront, 75 acres. We're going to be creating a new park at the Bobby Jones, and we're looking, actively looking for spaces in the Rosemary District that we can purchase to create a park there. So we also passed a tree protection ordinance that then provides for canopy trees when possible. So I certainly am a proponent of that. I don't think we should never use palm trees. We are Florida after all, but I think the city has a very robust effort to have canopy trees. In fact, we just did a, a tree giveaway a couple of months ago.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Albert. Mr. Barbetta?
Thank you, Peter. Terry touched on it very well. You know, canopy trees are extremely important, enhance the downtown. We all know their qualities from an environmental perspective, but they also have an incredible quality from an economic perspective. They enhance the, the streetscape. They add to the beauty of a downtown. When you look at your great cities, you know, whether it's Asheville or Saratoga or wherever it may be, Greenville, South Carolina, there are trees. The streets are lined with trees, very functional. I know we're trying to do it with the flower baskets and things like that, but you need to, you need to have quality trees. We advocated that many years ago, probably back in '05, '06. They did start planting, then the trees were removed, and they changed things around. But there needs to be an active program. It's extremely important. And also, any possibility of any area that's still not paved over should be utilized. And Terry touched on that with the roundabouts. Why we're putting those structures in the center of the roundabouts is beyond me. Number one, they're a distraction to the driver. And number two, you have beautiful green space that could be functional within there, and that's what should be done.
Thank you, Mr. Barbetta. Mr. Hyde?
Well, I don't think it's a terribly controversial issue. You know, I remember when I was a young man working in London, and I was in a guy's office on the second floor, and I saw a picture that was obviously the outside of his building probably 100 years ago. And there was this little sapling outside, and I looked outside the window, and the tree was right up to the second floor. They give us perspective. They give us a connection with, with nature. I'm not sure I buy the statistical impact on the environment as it relates to the 26 square miles of our city, but the bottom line is, I don't think anybody's going to get terribly bent out of shape if we have more trees than less trees. So I'd be in favor of it. I'm not sure that Benderson would.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Mr. Patterson?
Yes, so I'm a stewardship council member of an organization called the Pachamama Alliance. And what the Pachamama Alliance does is we provide economic development for the indigenous people in the Amazon and work with them on medical issues and education issues as well, with the goal of letting them be the stewards of the Amazon. The Amazon's the largest carbon sequestration location in the planet and provides fresh car, fresh oxygen for the entire planet. So I'm all about the environment, and I've been to the Amazon. I've studied it. I understand the importance of the canopy. So I've, I, I've got a lot of experience. I look at opportunities like the Legacy Trail that's going to come to downtown. It's a perfect example of building an extraordinary canopy for people to walk and enjoy, just as we are talking about here. In addition, when we talk about the Rosemary District, I'm, I'm all about having a park in the Rosemary District. The problem with the city is they say, you can have it, but we're not going to give you very much money for it. So go find somebody that'll give you a piece of land for not much. So they're really behind the curve. They want to get land below the market and think it's going to happen. And what's going to happen is that they're just going to keep building, and there will be no green space in the Rosemary District. So I would change that. I would get ahead of the curve on development for green space in places that are seeing a lot of growth, like the Rosemary District. Make the Legacy Trail, make that a centerpiece of the Legacy Trail, that the opportunity to get on your bike in downtown and, and explore and also enjoy the green space. So I'm all about it. It's, I live it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Patterson. Brett, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Peter. The next topic is on the subject of transportation. The city of Sarasota is in the final process of creating a citywide transportation plan to help shape our transportation network for the next 25 years. It has held several public meetings and conducted online surveys involving significant numbers of local citizens to get their views on priorities. What would your priorities be for transportation improvements within the city of Sarasota? And we'll start with Mr. Wells.
Yes, thank you. I want you to know that transportation is going to change dramatically in the next 15, 20 years. Driving is going to become autonomous. It's no longer going to move like a spring as you're driving up to a stoplight and everything compresses and then expands. It's going to be a lot more free. and then expands. It's going to be a lot more fluid. I think it's a tremendous mistake to squeeze down the roads at this moment in time. I also think the roundabout are a mistake. And we'll see how that plays out. I don't think that we should be so aggressive of closing down the traffic lanes at this moment in time. I think you need to let the traffic develop, and it's just what it is for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Albert.
Well, I'm on the Metropolitan Planning Organization and also which helps decide where their federal dollars for transportation go. And I'm also on the Florida Legos Cities Transportation Committee. So this is a subject that is very important to me because I want to see Sarasota have a modern transportation system. I went to several trans forums that were put together by the Metropolitan Planning Organization and Florida DOT that talked about the planning through 2045 of looking at what the transportation is going to be. As Mr. Wells said, things are going to change dramatically. There's going to be autonomous cars. There's going to be a lot of different things. I sat through a day-long webinar last week on complete streets and the transformation that makes in a community. So roundabouts are part of it. Roundabouts will increase the traffic flow and cut down on the congestion, and they cut down on 90% of the fatal traffic accidents. So I think the direction that our city and our transportation Sarasota in motion is going in is exactly according to what the experts are recommending. People who know more than we do about transportation, and this is being done not just in Florida, not just in Sarasota, it's being done around the country. So I think what we're doing is great, and actually, taking away lanes sometimes does achieve traffic flow, believe it or not.
Thank you, Commissioner Albert.
You don't want to widen roads. That adds to the congestion. So thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Barbetta.
Thank you, Brett. A couple of things. First of all, that 25-year plan has had a $118 million price tag. So I don't know if the public's aware of that yet. Also, the city recently spent upwards of $450,000 on that mobility study. Why they did that is beyond me. They've got in-house transportation people. They shouldn't have spent that kind of money, number one. And number two, when you look at the report, it's a rehashing of a lot of prior reports. I think to enhance downtown, we're probably one of the few cities that doesn't have a trolley. We should have trolley circulators, multiple trolleys, going to St. Armin's, going to the airport, going to the hospital, going to Robarts Arena, areas around the city where people can park their cars or have a huge employee base, like the people at the hospital who could come to downtown to have lunch or whatever. It's not well thought out. We talked about having trolleys for years. The city keeps balking at it because the county has the scat buses. But the scat buses are having a hard time even getting around the roundabouts, let alone going around downtown. When I was on the county commission, I proposed to move the bus transfer station over to the Ringling Garage. It's all designed, ready to go. The city commission balked at that. That property could be back in the tax rolls. The city bus transfer station now, it's outgrown, it's used. Move the buses over there, use the money, sell the property, use the money to buy trolley circulators, and get a good quality trolley circulator system in the downtown area, out to the Keys, that the tourists can use, that the residents can use. That will alleviate some of the traffic problem.
Thank you, Mr. Barbetta.
I don't think the roundabouts are going to solve it either. Thank you.
Mr. Hyde.
Well, you know, bringing the experts, Joe's right about one thing. They're nearly 500 grand for this, but millions wasted on other reports over the years, most of which gathering dust. Let's not forget the I Ride disaster. You know, we're going to have this thing. It's going to break even. We subsidize it for a couple of years, and then it's, oops, that didn't work. So look, there's some really very simple stuff. You don't have to pay me 500 grand. I'll give you the simple skinny right now. First off, if we really want to get traffic moving, we have to get the traffic that's not going to the city around the city. That's a bifurcate. That's not a special road. We can do it. We can take stuff that's going from north to south and take it around the outside of the city, stuff that's going from the south to the north around the other side of the city. If you take that away, all of a sudden, it's a little bit more doable. We should downtown encourage the urban lifestyle, you know, walking, the whole thing. I like these new buildings, these infill buildings. They don't have much of a view, but people there can walk to a coffee shop. They can walk to Whole Foods. They can walk to a restaurant. That's an interesting option as far as quote-unquote multimodal. But increasing the density, allowing people to have smaller apartments. In New York, you don't need it. You know, you can't afford a 2,000-square-foot apartment. Our zoning causes us to create its own traffic. So if we went down to 600, 700 square-foot apartments, I don't believe people would need a car at all if they were in the urban core. So maybe the next time they want to call an expert, they could just call one or two people with some common sense, and we could save them money.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Mr. Patterson.
Thank you. So up until about a week ago, all I did was be CEO of Ascend Wireless Networks and work in the business community. So I haven't been involved in originating these traffic studies, or reading them, or not reading them, or implementing. So I don't know all these traffic studies. I just know that my quality of life here is quite good. And a lot of it has to do with I live downtown, and my office is downtown. I can telecommute. So the trends, general trends are working in our favor. The Rosemary District's a perfect opportunity where young people that are doing a lot of these service jobs and a lot of these, you know, the clerical jobs can afford to live downtown and work downtown. So there's not a lot of cars involved, a lot of traffic. I experienced that when I go to the Rosemary District in the morning. And so I think a lot of it, and we're not helping with driving businesses or discouraging businesses from locating in Sarasota. So a lot of the traffic issues, if the jobs were in Sarasota, and the people lived downtown, jobs are close to downtown, we wouldn't have a lot of traffic. You know, I don't want to get into every situation where the city's worked against good traffic management. You know, you look at The View and the Embassy Suites, and there's like a few feet. There's no more lanes going in downtown because they just created this big bottleneck in probably the busiest intersection in the county. So if I'm on the board or the commission, I'll look at all these things. The trends are working in our favor, but the last few decisions they made were awful for traffic management downtown. You have all the people coming from Longboat Key across the bridge. You know, 5 o'clock, I have a bridge view, so I see the traffic. And they come across, and they try to make that left intern. What a mess. And to say that adding a lane wouldn't help is like, I don't know where you live, but you don't live there. So anyway, I'll be happy to get engaged and pull my thoughts whenever the time comes. And I hope I get that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Turner.
Yes. Part of the mobility plan involves expanding the walkability of the city, sidewalk facilities, walking facilities, bicycle facilities, and transit facilities. I support all of those. I think we should have them if we can afford them, but we should think of them as amenities, not as a substitute for roads. Nor do I think that we should rely on consultant reports and theoretical technology to design today's road networks. We're behind private development in our road construction and our public infrastructure. We need to get a public infrastructure that's consistent with the private development we're seeing. And it needs to be a road structure that will support that volume without the assumption that in July and August and September, people are going to walk a half a mile to get to wherever they're going. I love those facilities. I like Don's idea of shaded walks along the Legacy Trail. I think that'll happen, but it's not going to substitute for car trips. So my notion is we should develop a transportation plan that assumes that for the foreseeable future, the bulk of people's mobility will be by car. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Peter, I'm going to pass it over to you for our next question.
Can I do a quick rebuttal on that?
Sure.
I wish all of you would watch this webinar that I watched last Friday, and I'm sure it's available. It was recorded. And they went through city after city where years ago, the old model was you widen the roads, and that was going to help get people through the city and add to the transportation. And what it did was it delighted all of those downtowns. And in order to get them to come back, they had to change that, put in complete streets, get rid of the ugly highways running through the city. So that's not the best way to do it. Thank you.
I need to respond to that.
We can do a brief 15-second response.
I'm well aware that adding lanes doesn't solve the congestion problems. There are highways in Beijing that have 50 lanes of freeway going in both directions, and they often have freeway congestion that lasts 12 hours. That was not my point.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I'm going to pass it over to Peter for our next question.
Okay, thank you. This question. The voters in District 2, the district in which you're running, as well as the other districts in the city, are very much concerned about the tenor in general of city commission meetings and the interaction among city commissioners, including the aggressive questions and comments directed toward each other and city staff urges upon rudeness and incivility. Based on actual prior experience and serving on other boards and committees, public, private, nonprofit, and the so forth, do you believe you have the skills and desire to ease the tensions and incivility during the many meetings you will be attending as a commissioner with staff, other commissioners, and the public? If possible, cite examples of strategies and techniques you have used successfully or seen others use successfully to facilitate an atmosphere of cooperation and civility. And we'll start with Ms. Albert.
Yeah, I have been on a lot of other boards, a lot of other commissions. And generally, my attitude is that everybody should be able to speak. Everybody should be able to agree to disagree and not get rude and nasty about that. I don't think, you know, I don't feel like I have been doing that. And I try really hard to make sure, when I was running the meetings, for example, to make sure everybody got a chance to ask all the questions they wanted, to speak how they wanted to on any issue. But I certainly don't condone people being rude to anybody else or to the public or to the staff.
Thank you. Mr. Barbetta.
Thank you, Peter. Again, all you have to do is look at my endorsements, all my former colleagues. Obviously, we respected each other, and we worked together without any problem at all. I watch the city commission meetings, and I have to tell you, it's probably one of the most dysfunctional things I've ever seen. They need to park their egos at the door. And Liz, I'm not blaming you. I'm not singling you out. But there are some people on that city commission that have a serious ego problem. And that is not fair to the public. You're supposed to be involved in public service. That means serving the public, not attacking each other, not just acting like kids sometimes, failing to call on people, not recognizing somebody. If you look at the pandemic situation, for example, the county commission continued to meet. They had less than a mile away. They met at the county building. The dais was big enough for social distancing. The public was able to watch the meetings in public. What the city did is they started off with just the mayor in the chambers, and you guys had to call in or whatever. And it was like a monarch just running the show, totally wrong. Then Commissioner Brody challenged that. He walked into a meeting. There was problems there. And now you're ending up doing a Zoom meeting. I still don't understand why you don't use your chambers and why you don't just social distance and have your meetings so the public can watch them. But there has to be mutual respect between commissioners and among commissioners. You'll never get anything done properly. And the staff has to be the same, including the administration. Has been disrespect from the city manager to a commissioner or two? That's not right. You know, we need better civility there. The public deserves better.
Thank you, Mr. Barbetta.
I agree with you.
Mr. Hyde.
Well, I mean, I hardly want to talk about people being rude. Let's be frank, you know, it should always be about substance over style. What you've got, and this is not unique to the city, you know, the fact that they all agree at the county, they've all got the same paymaster. But when you talk about five narcissists fighting for air, it's going to be a bad outcome. I mean, you know, God bless Jenna Hearn-Cotter, has taken her turn at the throne, and she's grabbed it and squeezed it hard. One of the things I found very frustrating to watch is what looks to me like a form of bullying, where the majority, or most of the votes, one can predict how things are going to go. I've seen frankly what I would consider schoolyard bullying of Commissioner Brody. And, you know, he can take care of himself, but they keep forgetting something. He got more votes on his own than all of them put together, with the exception of Jenna Hearn-Cotter. So, you know, they push him out, they marginalize him, they mock him, and they allow the city manager to dig at him too. So they all have a piece of this. Whether I'd make it better or not, I doubt. But the bottom line here is that it isn't a question of saying it's terribly important to me. The most important thing is policy, and I see poor policy. But the arguments and the pettiness, everybody can see that. And the last couple of months, and that's, you know, Joe's right, we should have been, and we should be now, getting back in the chamber three months without meetings. It's just an embarrassment.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Mr. Patterson.
Right. So for me, one of the things is I'm self-funding my campaign. So there's no donations. I'm not taking any donations, no political action committees, no special interest. So I have no agenda. My agenda is the quality of life for all the citizens of the city of Sarasota. So no decision has to turn out the way I want it. I want to be visionary and inspirational and enroll people and doing great things for the city. And so, and as a CEO and sitting on boards, I'm on the Board of Directors for Big Brothers and Big Sisters. In July, I'll be the chairman of the board. And it's a huge organization, serving 2,000 kids. And one of the things I know, whenever I feel like I'm right, and I practice this in life, when I think I'm right, I get the most nervous. Because I'm pushing that I'm right, and then it turns out I'm wrong. So I always think about that, that anytime I'm right and I'm pushing right, that be cautious, listen, be generous, because I just might be wrong. And so that's how I'll approach it. You know, no agenda. It doesn't have to go the developer's way. It doesn't have to go any particular way. It's going to go the way that I think is best for the city. Every decision, just what's best for the city, because I'm not going to owe anything to anybody.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Turner.
Well, I like what Don Dan said. Now, the most important skill for a city commissioner is the ability to work in a team context, to collaborate and cooperate, to come up with a coherent, agreed policy agenda. You can't do that if you're bullying your colleagues. You can't do that if you're berating them, if you're insulting them. You can't do it if you're constantly squabbling. And you can't do it if you don't even understand Robert's rules of order. So, you know, my experience is extensive, as is Dan's apparently, serving on boards, serving in companies, working in large groups, collaborating. That's the way you get things done. Mutual trust and respect, that has to be established by the city commission. And I will work very hard to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Wells.
Yes. I have very, very calm, cool demeanor. But don't take that as a sign of weakness. It's not. It's a sign of strength. I was a very successful operator, and I've seen people at their worst, which, when I separate them from the money. You have to remember is you can't go into these meetings and be aggressive. You have to listen, take your time, and listen to the other side, and try and find a place to negotiate. Very, very simple. When I was on the floor, I was a member of the exchange. When I was on the floor committee for the NYMEX implementation, I was basically the referee. And that is exactly what I'll bring to the table.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Peter? Peter? May I just add one thing? 15 seconds. Yeah, okay. The titles trouble me also, by calling a commissioner vice chair all the time. The titles trouble me also, by calling a commissioner vice chair all the time. The public's listening or watching, they don't even know who mayor's talking about. Both titles, mayor and vice mayor, or vice mayor, I guess, are ceremonial. They're not elected by the community. They're appointed by their fellow commissioners. It's ceremonial, and it rotates every year. So it bothers me, rather than saying Commissioner Shelley, Eddie, Shelley Freel and Eddie, she says vice chair. So nobody knows who she's talking about. Call them by their name. We did that on the county commission. We called each commissioner. We didn't say chair or vice chair. It's not about titles.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Brett, are we going to go to an audience question, or should we go to a shutdown?
I do. I've got a, I've got an audience question here. And this audience question relates to the Bay project in downtown Sarasota. A funding mechanism for the Bay Park is a tax increment financing district that's been proposed to the city commissioners, or that was proposed to the city commissioners in December of 2019. Do you support the Bay project and a TIF district to help support it? Do you support holding public hearings prior to city commission approval? And we will start with...
Mr. Barbetta.
Mr. Barbetta, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I think the Bay project's a good project. I do feel that it probably would have come out of the ground quicker with some of the private sector involved, but it is a great piece of property. And I do think with the manner in which it's been brought about and the board, excellent board and leadership, and I do think the TIF district is one of the few ways you're going to be able to get it funded. But I do think the problem with the district working with the county is the makeup of the board that's going to govern the TIF district. We went through that with the CRA when it expired. So I think that's imperative that some collaboration occur between the city and the county to come up with a good term of number of years, the board, makeup of the board. I think in fairness, it'd probably be two city commissioners, two county commissioners, and one independent person. But I do think there are some good people there, and I think it's one of our few places on the waterfront. I do feel that when you're looking around the country at some of the waterfront properties, companies like the Rouse Corporation have been experts in developing waterfront property. But this case, the city decided to do it this way, and that's fine, but it's going to be a longer process of raising the mood.
Thank you, Mr. Barbetta. And Mr. Hyde?
I'm in favor of the Bay project. I'm a little frustrated at how slow it is. It seems to me about 20% of the people that are here now will probably be dead before it's finished. Bottom line, though, is that this is a whole region investment, and I think for all the lifting to be done by the people within a mile or two of its edges is probably a bit too much. I think sometimes it's appropriate to put this to the public and ask them, okay, you know what it's going to cost? Do you really want to wait until maybe it's too late for you, or do you want to see it come out of the ground sooner? So I contemplate and consider some kind of bond issue, at least to go to the public and ask them if they want to do one, because this is a whole regional investment. Logically, if we did it well, and we did it sooner rather than later, it would improve the whole of Sarasota, a tremendous gateway. The city is the capital of the north end of the county. We can do this well, but doing it piecemeal over a 15 or 20-year period, that just doesn't do it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. And Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, with the Bayfront project, I had a few concerns. Overall, I liked the project, but my concerns were, is the Tif Street boat ramp, it's a huge asset to the city. It's one of the few boat ramps that is accessible to the public. So that was an important, and they were going to get some configuration changes that I thought would not be positive for the voters. And so I was concerned about that. My second concern was, is having the waterfront dining, I felt like it was going to take away from the downtown area. I feel like the downtown area and the few areas in the city that we have, restaurants are walkable. I'd like to see that infrastructure continue to be supported, not kind of pulled away from it to different locations with the entertainment and the dining, so I was a little bit concerned about that. And my third concern is the amount of human traffic. You want human traffic in these parks, otherwise we're just going to see a shift of the homeless population. So to me, I would, I would like to see a little bit more mixed use in there, some commercial piece at the fringes, get people that have walked their dogs in the morning, kind of discourage the homeless encampment. Maybe we tackle our homeless problem before the park's built, but that was a big concern of mine. I've been at the boat ramp, I see the homeless people already kind of congregate on the waterfront of the boat ramp, and they were just going to have this new bigger area. So overall, it's great. You have to invest, so whether it's a, you know, a tax assessment or however it's done, I'm a supporter. I think it's going to be a great green space. It's important. I've seen other cities that build like convention centers on the waterfront, and nobody can use the waterfront because there's a big ugly building on it. So those are mistakes that were made in the past. We're not making that mistake. A lot of public input would be great, so that everybody feels like they have some input.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Yes, thank you. I think that the Bay project is a great project. It's good for the environment, it's good for green space, and it's climate change ready. So it's a very positive project on so many dimensions. My concerns have to do with financing. I'm not opposed to a TIF district, but I'd want to be very careful about how the project gets funded if property values stagnate. Is the taxpayer going to be on the hook? Is the indenture written in such a way, or the trust agreements written in such a way, that it could convert into a general revenue bond? That's an issue that I think is very important, to protect the taxpayer from adverse future economic outcomes. And I like Martin's idea of perhaps a countywide bond issue. I think a case can be made that this is a countywide resource and that we should ask the county residents as a whole to step up. That may be a nonstarter in the county, but I think it's a provocative idea that's worth considering. So in sum, I think it's a really great project. I just want to make sure it never gets into a position where it can bankrupt the city.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Wells?
I support the Bayfront project. It'll be beautiful when it's gone. The issue here is the loss. You have to be very, very careful and adjust your expectations of this TIF and the revenue it'll bring. Overall, I think it's a good idea for the city, but it may be the situation where public, private partnerships are coming into play. It can be just the failure of the burden on the taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Commissioner Alpert?
I think it's a tremendous project. One of the reasons I ran for the commission in 2015, I went to a meeting of the Bayfront 2020 and realized that the next commission would be making these decisions about making this project happen. And, you know, it went through a lot of public meetings. This is a long time in coming to get to the point where we are. And it is a public-private partnership. We are proposing a TIF district to help fund it, but they're also getting a lot of private philanthropy to make this happen. The group that's in charge of doing this, this isn't their first rodeo. They've done these projects before around the country. They know what they're doing in terms of how to get them financed, how to program them to keep them from attracting, you know, the homeless, if that's what you're talking about. We're going to be able to get a lot of people out there. I think it's a great, you know, it's a great idea, it's a great use of our waterfront, and I'm very excited to see it completed.
Commissioner Alpert? I'm going to pass it back to Peter for our next question.
I keep forgetting to do the microphone. All right. So Brett, I think we need to get to the point where we're going to be able to allow our candidates to make a statement as to why they should be the ones that our voters appreciate the most. So I'm going to just give you one or two quick questions, yes or no. Might take five seconds to justify it, but I'm not going to give you more than that. Okay, number one, and we'll start with Joe on this. Should the sailor statue be returned to a spot near that which it presently occupies when the roundabout construction is complete? Joe?
Yes. You're talking about keeping it right there where it is, right in the vicinity?
Okay. Mr. Hyde?
Oh, absolutely. I had 2,500 people come on my page and say that 1,500 of them used an angry emoji when anybody talked about taking it and putting it anywhere else. So it's a symbol of another time, and we absolutely need to embrace it.
Mr. Patterson?
Keep it as close proximity as you can to where it is.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Turner?
I've always preferred new paths.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wells?
Put it back after construction.
Okay. Ms. Alpert?
Well, I'm going to go along with the consensus. It seems to be the public's consensus is that it should go back to where, near where it came from.
Okay, one more question. If the opportunity presented itself, would you support the city acquiring the present Salvation Army buildings and property? And we'll start with Mr. Hyde.
Absolutely not. Under any circumstances.
Thank you. Mr. Hyde, Mr. Patterson?
I haven't been involved in that debate. I don't have all the details. I'm not going to Monday morning quarterback. It's bad business, so.
Thank you very much.
I'll figure it out.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
I assume that associated with the question is the notion of moving it to someplace more, less accessible to downtown, and that the financial burden is not unreasonable. Under those circumstances, I'd be in a mess.
Okay. Mr. Wells?
It has to go to vote.
All right. Ms. Alpert?
I think I would also have to say, I'd have to have the details of whether it was a good idea or not. It's something like, the problem's worth something like 10 million. Do I think it's a good idea? Again, depending on where they would relocate. From what I understand, the Rosemary district doesn't think that's a good idea for a park there, so, you know, if we buy it, what are we going to use it for? Maybe...
All right, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Barbetta?
Absolutely not. City doesn't have the money, number one. Number two, they haven't disclosed why. They don't need to build any more buildings.
Brett, I'm going to turn it over to you to give our candidates a chance to talk.
Thank you, Peter. We'd just like to conclude the debate and the forum by giving each of you an opportunity to provide a brief two-minute closing, and we will start with Commissioner Alpert.
Okay, as I said earlier, I decided to run for the commission five years ago because I attended a meeting for the Bayfront 2020, and I realized that the next commission would be deciding what would happen on our bayfront. And I wanted to make sure the dream of transforming our bayfront would actually happen. I'm happy to say that we're now on our way to doing just that. Also, when I ran five years ago, the homeless on our streets were dominating the conversation in our community. Something needed to be done. With the help of many community partners, we implemented a housing-first initiative and have made substantial progress in providing housing and services. The number of homeless has gone from 1,106 in 2015, when I was selected, to 335 this year. My third commitment five years ago was to advocate for and help implement smart growth in our community, and I believe I've done just that. I'm running a second time because I want to continue to focus on planning for smart growth, of planning for smart multimodal transportation systems, which means not just cars, but bikes, bus rapid transit, light rail and walking, of planning for sea level rise and sustainability for our environment, of planning the creation of a world-class park system, including the new 75-acre park on our bayfront, of planning for how we retain our historic and cultural assets such as the Sarasota Orchestra and Selby Gardens. I've been working on these issues for the past five years. We've made significant progress, but there's still more to do. You can be certain that I will have the courage and the integrity to make the decisions that benefit the entire community and not just special interests. I ask for your support and your vote so I can continue my work for you. If you'd like to help, please go to lizalpert.com and join my campaign for a better, smarter Sarasota. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Alpert. And Mr. Barbetta?
Thank you, Brett, and thank you all for the opportunity and the great questions. You know, we live in a great city, no question about it, but there are problems, and they need to be addressed. And I think we've covered a lot of that tonight. We didn't talk about economic development, but along those lines, our arts and cultural community is extremely important, and they add to the economic development. So we always need to remember that. Their economic engines, they bring people in, and the people who go back north become walking billboards for Sarasota. They attract businesses, so it's important to foster our arts and culture organizations. It's important to foster our businesses, to help them along, to help them grow. Show them some love, show them you care about them. That seems to be missing. This isn't a dictatorship here. This is a cooperative community, and it should be governed by people who really, really have their heart in it. And I don't really see that. I've been fortunate to live here for quite a while. I'm invested in the city. I care deeply about the city. And I only hope that after watching tonight and watching the rest of the campaign as we go along, and going to my website, sarasodanosejo.com, that you'll see the endorsements I have, and see my track record, and see all the people I've worked with over the years, and think about me when you come to vote in August. Thank you again, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Barbetta. Mr. Hyde?
Well, I've been to every city commission meeting for the last four years. It's easy to play Monday morning quarterback and pick out a few. Other than Liz, nobody else on this panel has. I'll tell you what I would do. I'd get rid of the city manager. I wouldn't replace him. I'd make the deputy city manager the manager. That'd save us 250 grand a year. I'd cut the budget by 5% across the board, with the exception of the police department. I'd get the water bills cut because they're way too high. I'd support the police in a way that the current commission is not. They're going around shouting, no justice, no peace. Well, without respect for police, we don't have any peace. I'd resolve the Bobby Jones issue once and for all by leasing it out and forgetting being in the golf business, plenty of other golf courses. I'd put the strong mayor question to the public. And meantime, we'd need to have the city commission setting policy and not deferring to an unelected bureaucrat in the city manager. And with regard to economic development, you know, that's just corporate welfare by another name. So forget that, forget the sustainability department. Go to electmartinhyde.com and see a new day for Sarasota, starting on August the 18th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I want to reiterate a few things. So I've already proven myself to be a homeless advocate and experienced with one of the biggest problems facing the city. I spend time with Big Brothers and Big Sisters, working with 2,000 of the region's most disadvantaged kids. So I'm already serving this community. I'm just serving it as a private citizen and working on things that I'm passionate about. I'm passionate about this city and have a lot of experience in business. I built a huge company, hugely successful. One of the things you do in business is you always look at operational effectiveness and moving with velocity. And so I don't have to drive a garbage truck, but I could run a garbage company. So I'll learn these things that the city needs to, that I need to understand. I'll apply my 34 years of business experience and a successful experience. I started the Sin Water with my own money, and it's a tremendously successful company, serving clients like Verizon, which is not an easy thing to do. I can certainly make 57,000 citizens happy. When I think about the employees of the city, they're great. Every experience I've had with the city, the employees are great. My issue's not with the employees. My issue's with the leadership. So I would, I want to take my time and my resources and invest my, all of it, in working for the citizens of the city. And I'm coming to this as a self-funded campaign. I have no agenda. All I want to work on is quality of life for all of us. I don't have to push a developer's agenda, or who else would have a reason to invest political action committee dollars and direct campaign dollars to some of these candidates? And I don't want to put anybody down. That's not me. I want to be a visionary and inspirational. So I'm not sure what's going on for everybody else, but I'm self-funding. It's my money. I'm going to put it on the line. I don't want anything in return, other than just walk the streets of this great city and look back and say, I did something with my life.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Mr. Turner?
Yeah, my closing will be a bit shorter. I'm running for city commission because I know there's a better way. I know we don't have to accept what's happening to our city, and I know that one vote can make a difference. I ask for you to give me that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Wells?
Thank you. When you vote for me, you get a common sense and no-nonsense commissioner. Today, more than ever, we need my financial experience. I'm not for sale. Special interest groups won't buy my vote, and I won't... Special interest groups won't buy my vote, and I won't... I'm the candidate that will make sound, rational decisions. I will listen, and I'm not afraid to move to the middle ground. We need change, and that's exactly what I bring, new, fresh ideas. I built a career as a hard-charging water trader, who is it equal to negotiate to get a deal done? I don't want to see Sarasota become San Francisco or Fort Lauderdale. I'll fight hard for yours, not that come happening. Retire the politics as they do, and the same old cast of characters, and vote for me. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Wells, and thank you again to all the candidates. I'm going to turn it back over to Eileen and Shay to close this out. Eileen and Shay, can you join the, join, join the video?
Thank you, Brett. I really appreciate it. Thanks to all the candidates. It was a tough charge here. We did it, I think, pretty smoothly, and we really appreciate your passion and commitment to Sarasota. So we want to thank you all for running. As a side, I ran for city commissioner in Connecticut, my old home state, and it's not enviable what you're doing, so it's a lot of work. And so I really appreciate what you're all doing. So thank you on behalf of our community. Thanks to the audience who participated and listened in, and thank you to DSCA and all the members and volunteers at the Downtown Sarasota Alliance and the folks over at Shoemaker. Thank you all for your time and all your energy. I love it. I like the fact that passion's going to make Sarasota a better place, whatever shape that takes, we'll find out soon. But again, thank you again. Eileen?
Thank you, Shay. I guess we're not able to get on the video, but I would really like to thank all the participants of tonight's debate. You all deserve a medal for sheer endurance. Please try to imagine in a little bit of virtual applause because all of you have earned it. Thanks also to our moderators and the IT professionals who made this possible. The recording of this forum will be available on the DSCA website, which is, get your pencil, downtown Sarasota condo ASSOC, which is of course the abbreviation for association. So it's downtown Sarasota condo association abbreviated dot com. There you can also sign up for our newsletter, emails, and city updates. One final public service announcement. The primary election is August 18th. You can sign up for absentee ballots on the supervisor of elections website, and the final election is November 3rd. Don't forget to vote. Your city depends on it. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thank you. Click.